We can remain standing for a moment of silence for Mary Lou Rogers, longtime elementary and middle school teacher, and for Nick Georgerson, husband of Risti Georgerson, longtime middle school teacher. Thank you very much.
Welcome to the Monday, May 22nd, school committee meeting. I get a motion to approve the bills.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All is in favor? You know, approval of the minutes, the May 8th meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is made.
Second, under discussion. It was a part we talked about thanking this town for the pick. I think they also mentioned thanking up the track itself, which is the big project of the whole thing. So if you can amend that accordingly would be great.
I'm sure Mary can.
Yeah, I'm sure Mary can.
Make amends.
I can.
Mary will make amends. With those modifications, do you have a motion to approve?
We have a motion, yeah.
All is in favor? Amended amendments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Student rep tonight.
We have one.
Hi.
So the seniors' last day will be on Friday, May 26th. The senior class trip will be at Six Flags and will take place on Tuesday, May 30th. Baccalaureate will be held at CHS on Wednesday, May 31st, and Joseph Wappen of the class of 2003 will be speaking. The senior banquet will be held on Thursday, June 1st, and CHS final exams will take place June 12th through 16th.
Thank you very much. PTA.
So Friday night, we had a fun little end of MCAS, you know, end of third grade, coming to the middle school dance for third through fifth grade. And I'd say we had about 100 kids come, and a lot of them were the third grade, and they were all dressed up, so cute, and they were so excited to be there. It was a very successful event for the PTA. It was nice to see the kids. Some of the parents stayed, which I like the connection from the parents and the kids and seeing the school. So we're planning another movie night, a family movie night, for again, grades three through five, on June 9th, which correlates with the June 7th step-up day from the elementary school. We did this last year, and it was a success as well. Just get some comfortable and acclimated to the school. That would be, I think that's our last fundraiser that we'll have this year for the kids. Right now, we're having a, we're running a raffle ticket for the Red Sox, a Red Sox game. It runs through this Friday, I believe. And if you're interested, you can contact, at the high school, I believe it's Angela Kaiser, Elementary School Chrissy Dobek, and at the middle school, myself, Erin Kate Moran. And it's, I believe, $10 for a sheet of 25 tickets. I think, I think you're hooked up already.
I'm sure I am. I'm pretty sure.
So the other thing that we, we have our next meeting, June 8th, at 6:30 at the middle school. That'll be our last one for the year. We're ending on a good note. Our funds are pretty, doing pretty well. Every little bit helps, even having this dance. I mean, we brought in like $1,000 just for an hour and a half dance.
Wow.
Entrance, snacks, they had a little glow theme. It was fun. It was fun, and every little thing helps. So we do a lot of this at the middle school. What we're looking for next year, we're looking for more board members to come on board, because right now, there's three teachers that are running this, and a parent, and a bus, she's a bus driver as well. So, and we're all stationed at the middle school. So it's super easy to run events, multitask, you know, gingerbread shop, movie night, dances, you can, in between, running, running around, you can get it all done. It's more difficult to get things done at the elementary school level. So we're really looking for either parents or teachers to just join us, not to make a huge commitment if they don't want to, to kind of get a little team going down there. Because if we can do that at the middle school one night, they can double that at the elementary school, you know, just different events. And it's fun for the kids. They really love it. I get a lot of positive feedback. The kids were very excited. And they're fun events, and fun family events. So spread the word to parents and teachers. We really would love more people to join us. It's been a fun year. It's been a really fun year. We learned a lot, so hopefully it'll make it easier for next year to do these things. And we're trying to, like, stay away from a lot of the fundraisers you take home and sell, because they do that for other things. So the events are really, really worth what we're going for again next year.
Great.
And that's it.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a quick question?
Yes.
Do you have any special guests lined up for your next meeting?
We do. We have this special guest coming in.
A shameless pitch.
His name is Dr. Myers. I apologize. That's right. That's right. Yes, Dr. Myers will be there that next, was it two Thursdays from today? No, today's a Monday.
June 8th.
I don't know what date it is. June 8th at 6:30 at the middle school. So again, hopefully, we're spreading the word so more parents and teachers can come meet Dr. Myers. And I think there's, is there something else going on there too? We're trying to get as many people there as possible.
Well, it's not Mark Wahlberg, but...
No, I had my, no, I met Will Ferrell. I'm good. We're good.
Be good, though.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Special, special needs, I don't see anybody who does special needs pack. CTA? Nobody. Empty table. Yes. I guess nothing. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, leave of absence request. We have one for you, maternity leave. Michaela Moran, occupational therapist at the elementary school. Her maternity leave would start on October 24, and she would return to work on April 2nd. She says 2018, but that's like retroactive, so I think she meant 18, not 17, excuse me. So she'd leave October 24, 17, and come back on April 2nd, 18. So that's just to let you know that that is what is happening. And the next thing is revised budget. Karen, you want to come down? I believe I've left the budget information with you. We had a meeting, when was that meeting? Dr. Meyer was there too, Thursday, Thursday night. There was a FinCom meeting, and they had a couple of questions for us. I guess that's why we had the meeting. And I'll let Karen go through this, but it basically ended with a 3% increase over last year, which, remember, we came in at 5.2. We really needed 3.5. I tried to push for 3.25. From what I understand, there may still be a chance. They're going to have another meeting, I believe it's either later this week or next week. And so that's why we're, we're going to present you two scenarios, and we'd like you to approve them. This would be the new approved budget going forward that goes to town meeting. Karen?
I'm also starting with the one that we're going to get, that's the 3%. It's version two. So we start with the superintendent's budget at the 5.2%. We had to make 474,346,000 worth of cuts in order to get down to the 3%, the 3%. Some of the cuts are the complimentary position. $100,000 of books, but that went into the Warren article, so that was just a wash. We cut $50,000 from the retirees, which we took like $10,000 from five of them. Unfortunately, the money for the painting, I moved one half, another half of preschool into revolving account. Another one, custodial student helpers, I had to take $10,000 from that. I had tried to increase it, because we were using them a lot this year, but unfortunately, had to cut some there. Another one that, the computers for the teachers, we had to cut that in half, took $30,000 out of that. We're going to attempt to see if maybe we can lease and try to get more computers, but at this point, it's $30,000 off of that. They'll still be getting some computers for the teachers, but not, not what they'd hoped for. I had to take some more of the circle breaker money, $46,593. And then, part-time CHS DLL teacher is gone, the part-time nurse is gone, and the part-time ESL position at the elementary school.
Elementary, yeah.
That one's gone. What they did with the warrants is they took the special education ban, which was $30,000 warrant, and they put that into the general fund. They wanted to put it into the general fund rather than have it be a warrant, which I thought was better for us. And so that total right now, with the FY '18 adjusted budget, is $22,152,032, which is an increase of 3.14%.
22 million. So when we say 3, 3%, it really is 3.14%, and that's because, in a bit of an unusual move, they, they, you know, they liked the van idea, they thought it was a great idea, they thought it would be a savings, but they put it in our budget instead of leaving it under a warrant article. I think Mr. Tombolo said something about they, they were trying to combine a lot of warrant articles. They, they thought the voters might be a little tired of warrant articles for $5,000 or $10,000. They kind of wanted them to be a little more meatier than that. So that's why they did that. So that has been approved, you know, by the finance committee. We, we think we might be able to get a little bit more out of them, but that's neither here nor there yet, I guess.
With version one, the one that we would like to have, we get a little bit more money for the computers for the teachers, and we'd also get the part-time nurse and the ESL position back.
Yeah. So those last two positions are the ones that, that we try to save to the very end, and, and at least at the moment, they're going to have to go by the wayside. But if we can get that 3.39, then we can increase by .25 the nurse at the elementary school, and we can increase by .5 the part-time ESL position. Make it, it's now part-time, make it a full-time. So those are the two key positions. And like I said, I, what I'm looking for is a, is a vote to kind of go forward with this until we finalize things from, from the finance committee. Certainly looks like it's 3.14, but I would hate to have you guys vote that and then find out that the finance committee maybe was going to put in a little tiny bit more. You see, it's not a lot of money, the difference is there at all. It's a little over 40 grand, so...
I also gave you a copy of the warrant articles. They did approve all the warrant articles.
Yes, yep.
They approved $100,000 for textbooks and technology, which is why we're able to take $100,000 out of the general fund. I approved $50,000 for new doors and general repair and maintenance to that main office. We put it that way, so if the new doors came under that, we could still use some of that money, because the central office certainly always needs some help.
Yes, cosmetic work, too.
Cosmetic work. And then the last one, the $50,000 to build the permanent walls to replace the...
At the middle school.
The middle school.
That'd be a major improvement.
Yes, yeah. And what they are going to do is they're going to combine that. So the warrant article that the public will see will be $100,000. And, and I tried to make my point to Mike Ward that we want to make, we don't want to be handcuffed on this. It's, so it's repairs and maintenance, cosmetic work for, and, and one of them was for our building, 150 School Street. The other was for the middle school, but I certainly hope the way they put it is going to be that we can use it for what we need it for, which says it here, but we, as Karen said, the leftover money, we want to do a little painting and things like that. So hopefully, we won't run into any problems in the future. They have to put the language just right, of course.
One of the reasons we were, really wanted to stress that is because we have that warrant suite, had a little bit money left, and were unable to use the money because it was so strict in the wording.
Yes.
So that's a, but you should read that when you show it in the warrant articles.
Definitely.
When you word them.
Yep.
One was the track, we had a little money and we could not use it.
Yes, that's right.
They wanted to get some equipment and stuff.
Lots of money.
Yep.
Any of these cuts put us in violation for regulations?
No, no, they, they do not. It's just that, you know, what I've said before is that our special populations, those are the kids that really need the extra attention, the extra help, and, and those are the ones that seem to be hanging in the balance. That's the problem.
So you know, with cutting back on ELL and a couple other positions, there's nothing...
Right, I mean, because presently, there's a half person. They're trying to stretch them, but that was just because of, of schedules and anticipated population coming in and things like that. But it would just mean it stays the same, and, and, you know, we're fine as far as we're not in non-compliance or anything like that. It's just that...
Mandatory coverage.
Right, we've got that.
Yeah, we were able to keep in the, the positions for the middle school and most half-time spent teachers.
Yes, yes, yeah. So we did manage to keep some positions, yes. The, the fourth grade and fifth grade teachers, the additional, and those were class size issues all the way, they are still in it. The half-time to full-time middle school clerk secretary is still in it. The, the special education teacher, the high school wanted one, the middle school wanted one, we ended up with one, and they're going to have to sort out half here and half over there. That will be, you know, going down the road this summer, that'll have to be worked out. So we did get some new positions, and of course, we lost the majority of the proposed new positions that we felt we needed, but...
And then, as far as McKinney-Bento, how is that adjusted?
The reason that I thought it was okay to do that, I looked at the history of the McKinney-Bento transportation, and it appeared from the history that it wasn't going to be that bad to cut the $10,000. And then the other reason I cut it was oftentimes, we'll get money from the state for McKinney-Bento. So in the past, you've, you've been able to cover all of your McKinney-Bento, your credits from the state. But even, even if you don't get the credit, the history was okay, unless that was...
So the history of it is we've budgeted, you know, over the past few years, we've budgeted more than we've spent?
A little, a little more, and then this year, looking at what you've spent to date, it was very little, and so...
And that combined with reimbursement?
Right. And reimbursement in the past had covered a lot of McKinney-Bento, so it's been an area where you've been able to, you know, use it in, in another line. So it was really tough to, to try to find areas that weren't going to affect you very much, because it was kind of a lot of money to catch. So, you know, I really, Terry and I really looked at the history and see if there was anywhere we could really, okay. You know, that was one of the areas in transportation that was probably one of the only ones that I thought you could comfortably cut it.
Is that the majority of the impact of the expenses, transportation?
For the $10,000?
Yep.
That was just McKinney-Bento transportation.
Okay.
That's all it was. And even, most of the others, I mean, some of them, like the custodial student helpers, that was really, because the history this year has been higher. So next year, I thought we'd be able to make it a little higher, but next year, unfortunately, you're going to have to watch that, if you don't have the money there.
And then, how about the elementary impact, with cutting back on the ESL position?
You know, that's, that's fine. It's just going to be the way it is, that's all. So, I mean, we, we'll go with what we got. Mr. Rulo was okay with it. He just wanted to, to stretch that out from that, I think it's a fourth or third or fourth position, that right now is maybe three and a half teachers. He wanted that fourth one. But it'll, it'll stay three and a half, and we move on.
So across the board, class size-wise, we're, we're in good shape?
Well, I mean, I, I wouldn't say good shape, but we're, we're, we will, we will get by again. I mean, class sizes should all be lower, but, but we're going to be fine.
Do you have a number?
No, no. We, they're, they're going to be registering all summer long, sometimes August, we get a huge group in, so...
Are there grade levels where we have school choice openings?
Well, I can get to that under discussion items, but, but actually, I might as well, why don't I do that now? It's, you guys voted last time on school choice, and we're all set, limited openings. But just to go through, the elementary school will take school choice children K to 3. There won't be a lot of openings, but, you know, once again, we're just letting you know that it is open anyway. At the middle school, they certainly cannot take any, any students at all in grades four and five, but they can in six, seven, and eight. And then the high school is fine, nine to 12. So that just rounds out what you guys, I think, were looking for a couple of weeks ago. We said limited openings. So, you know, Rob said he might be able to take maybe two or three in each one of those elementary classes, but not much more than that.
Thanks. Did you have a decision be made, as, as you said that people are registering all the way to August?
Yes.
So when would we notify the families who have applied for school choice?
I would think that would be pretty, pretty soon, because as they come in, we number them and date them and all of that. So, you know, Rob will sit down soon and, and then let people know. We always tell them that they have to register in their home district anyway. They should always do that. And then they, they apply to us, and then we, we take it from there. But they're already like numbered or whatever, so...
So first in, first out?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Eng, have those temporary walls that we're looking at in the warrant article?
Yes.
To your knowledge, and maybe Ann Marie can speak to this, have we ever had to remove them and replace the original class size due to like a, a large class, or have those temporary walls, for lack of a better term, been permanent? Have like, they've always been like that?
Used to open them up for professional development?
Like parent comm, open house.
But it's never been like a, like a class size issue at the beginning of the year? You've realized that you've had a, okay, so that's, I just don't want to, that's fine. Just get that, that large class size on my mind. Don't want to corner us with, put it in permanent walls if we thought that we would have to actually like open up size on class, or that's all.
Oh, no, no. And, so anyway, I guess I'd be looking for a vote that this would be our official budget, and I don't know quite really how you can...
Which one?
Yeah, exactly. I don't know quite how you would put that, that, that a minimum, that you would vote to go forward with a budget of a minimum of 3.14 increase over last year and a maximum of 3.39%. How about that one?
Could I ask a quick question before we do that?
Yeah.
On the minivan? You guys can think about that. On, on the van that we're talking about? So we're talking about one van only, correct?
Yes.
And we're going to use it for, remind me, for transportation of students or for trips?
For special needs.
We're going to try, we're going to pick a run, an expensive, special ed added district run.
Okay.
Kathy and the super...
So that's my question.
Right.
So if that van breaks, what's the plan to get those kids where they need to go to?
We have to work on that, but it's going to be a brand new van.
I understand. I just want to make sure that...
It's going to not be breaking.
But, you know, things happen. Drivers get sick, things like that.
Transportation companies will be able to put one on for you.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure that we're good on that.
And the other thing, we did, I did not take any money out of that special education transportation, because in my past, when we get a van, it takes a little time to get the van in, and then you have to get it...
Right. You get drivers, and drivers get sick.
So I didn't want to take any money till we knew it was going to be ready. You've got to get your driver and all that.
Yep. So it may not be ready for September 1st or whatever, but we hope it will be.
So we have a plan.
Kind of like some teachers, right, as far as substitutes, so...
Yeah, we talked about that.
One van driver really, you need to...
You need to.
You need two drivers, yeah.
Terry can always do it, so...
Yeah, I'm going to look for something to do.
Second, second, and he'll be singing.
Oh, wow, that's even better.
He's going to paint and drive, so...
Trust me, driving children to school.
Oh, I forgot, no, he's not driving.
Yeah, you should rethink that.
So can I have that vote? Minimum of 3.14, maximum of 3.39.
So your recommendation to us is that we're making a motion to, to move forward with these proposed reductions in our request, budget request, at a minimum and maximum level?
Yes.
So can I, can I just say, for the sake of argument, if the minimum is this version two, could the maximum be our original estimate that we voted on?
You mean the 25,596 of 5.2?
I see why not.
We've been told it's going to be either or.
Yeah, but why not? That might...
I don't know if that changes anything and validates all the work that the schools did, that the superintendent did, that the discussion...
Yes, yes. And it might aggravate some people, so I'm all for...
So you're saying the minimum of 3.14?
Yeah, I, I like that idea. So what you're doing is accepting this budget at a, at a minimum of 3.14% over last year, period. And, and at a minimum, and by saying at a minimum, it means maybe they'll give a 6%, right?
Well, I just think that...
No, I, I like the idea. I, I don't know why we're squirming it out like that. You're right.
If you vote the minimum of 3.39, and then they don't come back, what would we have to do? Because I mean, obviously, we would all like the 3.39.
Yeah. I mean, we don't want to come back again and say, okay, we, sorry, we can't do that, we've got to do this. We are assured of 3.14.
Yeah, so, and, and, go ahead.
I was going to say, if I understand what you're saying, we'd like to, to approve the budget as, as it was presented at 5.25%. Accepting...
Which we've already done.
Yes, you've already did that.
And, and, and as a contingency, a minimum of 3.14 in that way that...
That's what I see.
And our request is, is what we originally thought was necessary, and that 3.14 is a minimum.
Which takes nothing away from the good faith effort that we're putting into working with the town, the municipal side, you know, in, in coming to agreement, but, but I think, you know, I also don't want to invalidate all the work that you and your team did to pull the original document together that we approved at this table.
Yes.
I don't disagree there.
We also have the public hearing. We have to set a public hearing, probably tomorrow, we've got to set it for the school budget, so that's why we need that. We need your vote to, to go forward, and that's what we present at the public hearing.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve at minimum, a, a minimum level of our original recommended, Mary, just help me out with the word. Original recommended budget of 5.0, of 3.14% and a maximum of the original approved 5.2.
5.2. Sounds good.
If I understand what I just said, you can second it.
That's good. I'll second.
So we'll take, so we get it?
Yes, that's all it's saying.
And just out of curiosity, since we had a blizzard of paper here, just, and the 3.14, which obviously just differs, just slightly from three and a quarter, what was the, what was the reasoning behind that?
Those two positions at the bottom and a couple of little adjustments. So the $8,000, which would bring the, the .5 elementary nurse to a .75, and then the, the ESL teacher, who's now a .5, and it would bring them to full-time.
The difference in the old paper and the new is because they added the special education ban.
Right. That's what kind of messed it up. In reality, they're giving us 3%, but for whatever the reason, they put our van in our budget, when we wanted it on a warrant article. But that's okay.
They're right, an increase in the budget, so...
Yes, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion, may I need a second?
I can spend a second.
Okay, all is in favor of this complicated motion?
Thank you so much. All right. We'll see what we can do with that. We'll call up Mr. Tombolo tomorrow.
And...
All right. Oh, you might as well just stay right there, right, Karen?
Yeah, we're going to do the quickest budget.
Yes. Discussion will be the third quarter budget, and then we'll call down the A.D.s for the athletic updates. Go ahead, Karen.
This is the third quarter budget update of the last open meeting. Meeting, the expenditures through 31 were 13,828,904 of the total budget of 21,477,701. So 64% of the total budget was spent as of March 31st. The total expenditure, 11% district, 9% elementary, 9% middle, 9% high school, 23% was special education, and 4% of vocational schools. Salaries were 63%. Expenses were 37%. The only area of concern that is the repair and maintenance of buildings. At that time, it was over by 61,336. It is ever increasing this year. We've got so many repairs and maintenance. Luckily, we held some of our rental of facilities money, so we do have monies to cover this. I'm not going to make the journal entry until the end of the year so I can see where we are on the budget.
And that's why we keep money in the rental account. For that express purpose.
It's been a really bad year with repairs.
Yes.
The circuit breaker, at the time of this report, was estimating that we were going to end the year with about 638,637. But I've been working on getting a real good estimate of year-end and pretty sure it's probably going to be less than that. We're going to be over in this special education tuition. I'm estimating, but estimating probably maybe the 400 range, 500. I'm hoping, and I'm wrong, but I don't think you're going to have the 600%. So my...
Is we budgeted for 3%?
We budgeted for 3%, but then we have some extra students move in.
Right. So that 1% extra that we're looking at offset some of those expenses?
Yeah. And so with the extra students, it's, they're not going to be able to... My hope was to get one full year of circuit breaker, so you're spending it the next year. We're not going to do that. But I do think we'll probably be at about, you know, 50 to 60% of circuit breaker. So it's still not bad compared to what you're in the past.
And that was the other concern about the finance committee had was us putting money in there. And we explained it very well, I think. Karen did a great job, and I think they both understand.
Did they finally accept that?
They, I think, they finally understand those two things. It's, you know.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, circuit breaker, I mean, obviously, the state giving us, giving us money next year for expenses we have this year, and us putting money aside so that we can cover it because we always have new people moving in. And of course, the town sees us with money.
Yes.
And they think we're like...
And they think we're, we're hoarding it.
And it's, we're not hoarding it, and it's just for a given expense that happens every year.
It's called smart money management.
And of course, I mean, what people also don't realize, and over the years, circuit breaker oftentimes mysteriously doesn't get funded. It was designed to reimburse you, but oftentimes, it's just not, they don't put any money in that line item, and that's...
I wasn't sure if they knew that you had to spend it the second year. So that, we did explain that, and I think some of them weren't sure, didn't realize that you had to spend it. It wasn't like you could hold it forever. You had to spend it the next year.
Right. So for next year, I'm sorry to ask the question, but what are we budgeting for, for the increase of the school class? Are we doing it 2%, 3%?
We did the 3%.
We did another 3%.
But unfortunately, in FY '18, because of, again, we had added students, we had the, for FY '17, I only budgeted about 750 of circuit breaker. And FY '18, we had to up it up to 950, and then I had to add more with this budget cut. So that's what I was explaining to the town, that not only are you, you know, you have to have a little bit in there in case you have kids move in. Luckily, you have a bottom line budget, so you might get an extra one-to-one in there. When that June comes in, you might get more transportation. So it's really a good idea to keep some of that circuit breaker. But they seemed okay after the meeting.
Yes.
Did you think so? So that was it. The school choice, where as of 4/24, we were at 79 school choice students. We budgeted for 80. And we're still on track, though. I think you're going to have maybe 200,000 in there, probably the tops 200,000 in school choice. Doesn't too bad. We're still never going to have those high balances in there. Out of 4/26 preschool tuition, 88% of the total money has been, was in, and that was only as of March. It's still going very well. Daycare is going very well. And Neanne gave me an update. I forgot to write down the figure, but food service has down a half of it.
Really? Yes, I think.
I think they're down to like only 15,000. They were like at 30,000. So all the receivers was doing really well.
Yeah. And that was the tightening up of policies and letters going out and us getting much more aggressive.
The other thing, I was telling Mary that this week, I'm working on a report to send to all the principals, so they're going to get an update this week of what they have remaining in FY '18 so they can make their plans very quickly. We're going to set a date that, that I would like to get the P.O.'s in so that they can spend some of their money, not only to help Annette so she's not at the end of year, you know, struggling to get everything in, but also so that they can spend the money that they have. Because sometimes they might go to the end of June and they're like, oh crap, I didn't spend all my, you know, I had, why I leave that on the table? So we want them to know where they're over and where they're under. So that's going out this week, so.
And then as far as the instructional supplies, what's there, the shift?
The instructional supplies being over, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, what I'm giving them is their, their whole budget because they have a bottom line, just like us. So Jim is over in instructional supplies, but then he's under in some other areas. So so far, he's not over in the year-end. So that's what I'm going to give them when I give them the reports is tell them some of the areas where you're over, but yet you're under in this area, so you want to make some...
But I just wonder if it was like one-time expenses. I know MKS 2 threw a curve ball to a lot of people. I didn't know if there was like a one-time expense that caused that.
I'm not positive, but I can look and see because his has been higher this year.
And it's, the only reason why I'm asking is so that, you know, when we go to make our adjustments, that we don't plan for the 10,000 increase, but it was a one-time, you know, expense that causes us to be in that position.
Right. I'll look at that. The other thing, that in your budget, I did not have this in my old school. They have like a general expenses and then they have instructional expenses. So I think sometimes people get confused on which one do I use? So he might be, have money in general and not, but I will look at that further.
And the only reason why I'm asking, I understand that happens, it's more of, so when we make our adjustments that, you know, we're not making a large adjustment and it's not needed. So that's responsible.
Yeah, I will look at that further with the instructional supplies and talk to Jim soon. So when I go over that with them. If anybody has any questions, otherwise, we'll move on to the athletic.
You guys want to come down and join us?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Karen.
Join me.
We're going to go over the athletic budget now, and we have our A.D.s with us.
How are you? Hey. How's that retirement gig?
This is the winter athletic report. And again, kudos to these two because they've been working really hard this year. Receivers have been in, and everything's been really good. The total general fund budget is what I'm going to do first, but athletics was 238,754. And through March, we had expended 187,448, which was 79% of that total budget. Basically, all of the monies except for the salaries for the coaches was pretty much gone and moving on to just using the revolving fund at that point. The bulk of the salaries, again, was the coaches and the officials, which was 61%. That transportation, 21%, supplies, 12%, fees, 2.5%, insurance, 3.5%. The revolving account, you pretty much depleted that last year. You started the year with only 4,610. The revenue thus far in March was 36,270, which was 12,456,50 for winter revenue, 23,815,91 for fall revenue. Your expenses through March were 11,318,87. So at that point, there was 29,562 in the revolving. Again, we still have the spring revenue to come in, but all the expenses will be coming out of that for the athletics. If you go to that athletic report, that summary report of the athletics, the grand total of the athletes that you had thus far this year was, I mean, through the winter was 259. If you have any questions on here, gladly answer it, but I'm not sure if you want me to go through every sport and how many people there were.
So thus far, 259 athletes? Is that what you said?
For the fall and the winter.
Yes.
And middle school athletics, six through eight, five through eight, seven through eight?
Maybe I'll go to Weaver for the sixth graders, two to come up, you know, play in the spring. But it's usually seventh and eighth grade.
Yeah. And is the user fee the same at middle schools it is high school?
No.
No.
It's different.
If you look at the winter, there's a page here that...
Oh, okay, that's one. Sorry.
That's the page, it has the fees that you have, and we need to see it. Let's see. The winter, I see if I can pull anything out, but...
All right, I see it.
You got it?
Yeah.
And then on this page here, here on that, the winter, where it tells you that the different sports and how many participants. I think I'll let the directors answer any of these questions about participation.
The co-op programs, they, they work out okay?
The co-ops are good. We had five with Hudson in gymnastics, two ended up with ice hockey, and we ended up with only one in wrestling. In tennis, we ended up with one with Tohant on, with the host.
Okay.
So they sent us one. In the past, it was three or four. But it just fluctuates from year to year, you know? Definitely want to keep them. We've been approached about a possibility of a co-op with the girls, ice hockey, because we do have some girls in the eighth grade. It wouldn't cost us much, if anything, because we would not be the host school, other than the athletic fees that they would pay and they would have to get their own transportation, like our co-op athletes do when they go to the Shoban Hudson. So it's something that has been put on the, you know, it's been brought up to me, and lacrosse was brought up to me, too. Not us hosting, but trying to start a co-op with Tohant and West boys. And we've probably talked about it Friday at the A.D. meeting, and I actually spoke to both athletic directors today. But their big concern is because I was the one who brought up the conversation, they would want us to be the host school, which we have not talked about or budgeted, so it might be a year away. But just to give you a little bit of a get-your-feet-wet type thing and feather your bed, it might be something that's going to be approached to you.
How about, how about indoor track?
I took the word that wrong.
I know. Dave was talking about...
We're the only school, I'll tell you, with the boys' track, as well as they do, we're the only school that doesn't have indoor track. And that's amongst the...
And we have enough people interested, Dave tells me.
And the fact that it's a short season, regular string track, and they would have a big advantage if they had winter track. Look how good they did this year without winter track. And then with winter track, we would be better shaped.
The thing is about winter track is every school is in the same boat, except for what you said, Shoesbury, Fitchburg, they have indoor track.
Yes, yeah.
So the Clintons and the Lunenburgs and even in the Shobas, they run the halls, they run outside, they throw the indoor shots in the gym, and they do the discus into the cage that Angel makes. So the expense wouldn't be all that much. It'd be transportation, the fee, and, and the salaries, you know? Certainly something that, again, I had said to Dave, that we, Dave and I had been talking about it, and I just like, and this will end up to be Steve's problem, not mine, but I, I like the idea when you start a sport that if the coach could be volunteer one year only, just to kind of see how it goes, rather than say, hey, I got a new sport, I got some kids, and suddenly, we've got to meet the varsity limit of all your varsity coaches and things like that. One year of, it's voluntary. And let's see how it goes. And when you do start it, too, I talked to people in college at Lunenburg, they wouldn't need a full schedule. I mean, they could, you know, they could go to South one weekend, and two weeks later, go to Fitchburg, and two weeks later, go to Shoesbury, and then whatever of our athletes qualified, then go to the Reggie Lewis Center where they have the meets.
Yeah.
You know, so...
I'd just like to see it start that way.
It wouldn't take many participants if it no track. It would be at a break-even point so that you wouldn't have to ask for your educator or whoever to be volunteering their time.
Plus, it'd be the athletic fee, too, that you would get.
That's, yeah, that's true, yeah.
Something you could supplement any of the...
It's just that we haven't really had it before, but we, years ago, we had people wanting to start a sport, and they would, they would jump right into it. And then by the end of the season, there's hardly any kids left. And it's almost like, here we are paying them, and, and we don't have enough of, you know, it just happened before. Not completely like that, but just kind of, that's why I like one year under your belt, and let's see. And do we have interest? Do we have more interest coming up in the ranks? If that's the case, this is going to be official. And now, let's pay the people for their time and, and get it rolling.
This winter, you could have had outdoor track. In the spring, you wouldn't have had outdoor track.
Exactly.
Really?
I think an important part of it would be...
A lot of the records were broken in our league this year.
Yes, yeah.
Would be gauging the, the student interest and, and not only the student interest, I think sometimes the, the parents' interest in it as well might be something that we could, I know that's a survey we could probably put out, but it'd be, it'd be good data to have to make a decision on, on, you know, any, any initiatives that we'd want to move forward, you know, to your point, just to make sure that, that the interest is there first before we start.
Yes, before you jump into it. I think that's what I'm looking at.
And I think it's even beyond interest, too. You know, when we look at kids that are involved in different youth sports and, and, you know, kids that are, are involved in gymnastics, in youth gymnastics outside of that, or youth lacrosse, or, or youth, you know, types of, of track and field events. But, but those kinds of things where there's already participation at that level building into what could be, you know, substantial numbers at the high school level as well, so. And, you know, I think those are all good things. You have to think about the survey. I think that's great. I, I know that we, I'm in on space sometimes, so maybe a space assessment would be a good thing to look at.
Well, in, in the winter here, though, we just have basketball.
Right. I was thinking more for lacrosse.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I mean, we, we do have the space. I mean, the field over here used to be the field hockey field.
Right.
You know, and then you have this field here no one uses.
And take a look at the regulations of the field.
Yes, yeah.
The fields over here, right?
What's that?
The fields you mentioned.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think, I, I know I had a lot of parents come up to me, some of the coaching staff suggesting that winter track would be a, a good thing and that there's an interest for it. And I think, you're right, I think, it just, we'd be more competitive as a team. I think the diversity of our school, I think, is changing a little bit. I think track would be a good sport.
I've been asked for this for my flight.
I know.
You know, and the survey, I'll give you a survey, you're sitting around my office for an afternoon. There's kids continuously asking for this. Coaches, we've asked, I've asked the coaches to get a, how do you say it? Estimate for a whole school cost.
Do you want my seat?
Yeah, it's very much, but there's a test. They've been asking for five years.
At least five years.
It's very few, like Tony said, very few meets, so the cost of busing is very limited. And the only event, Tony, is what, indoor shot club, maybe? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
That's the only concept in the gym, really, and that's...
My only concern is I think we should focus on a sport that's going to draw new athletes as opposed to a sport that's just going to transfer existing athletes in one sport into another one.
This is just a sport that's going to bring in those kids who can run.
The winter track, I think, I can kind of see that. This, but, yeah, but, yeah, right. Some of the other ideas, you know, this, we just, I think...
There's an interest there. There's definitely...
I'm talking about winter track. I'm with you, Mr. Hastings. I think there's an interest for that.
And I think we can just leave it to the athletic directors. We don't have to advocate for one sport or another. I just, I think that having a process in place where you're looking at continuing to expand the offerings for kids is all on.
Right.
Because you don't want to lose kids. You don't want kids to go somewhere else.
And have the opportunity to bring kids in.
That's right.
That are interested in playing.
Yeah.
And it's a long way of saying thank you for what you do.
Because winter would run a conference with basketball, correct?
You're saying Monday after Thanksgiving.
I think there's a lot of kids that are, would run track that aren't doing anything right now that would benefit those kids and keep them engaged into schoolwork.
Absolutely. They don't run it basketball, do they?
Can I ask that, Tony, is it, uh, boy coach, female coach, both?
What?
Boy coach, co-team, like two different teams?
You have to, right?
Yeah.
We could probably, we could probably do is like in the beginning of the school year, like in August, send out a survey to the kids and saying, hey, guess what? We're thinking about these many sports. So what sports are you interested in? And, you know, like, you know, and just take a survey, get a number. And that's your best bet because the kids are, oh, I like to do that. I like to do, say, guess what? I'm coming into the high school. And they know if we, you have it, they might be, say, hey, I'm going to stay here with my friends.
Right.
So, you know, you throw something up there, and just say, hey, coach me on.
Mr. Hastings said he would help with the survey.
I'll do it.
Same idea, right?
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All set?
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Karen.
I think it's next on the...
Are A.D.s?
Next on the...
Yeah.
So just out of curiosity, because lacrosse is an expensive sport to run, I just...
I think initially, equipment, I think in lacrosse, they, you know, like, they get a lot of their own, a lot of them get their own.
Just about anyone that's going to play at that level has equipment.
Yeah.
And the same with... Because if you're playing... The equipment, if we're funding it, it's probably just the cost of uniforms. They're going to play with their own sticks. They're going to play with, you know, if you want helmets, then sticks.
Supplying sticks and helmets, but for the kids that don't have one. But the initial cost would be, like, would be starting up any sport with a helmet, and hopefully, starting up a baseball club, where you're going to have to have another bat. But I think you're going to... But I think you're going to see that, I know, small and-
So you'd start up like-
JV.
JV.
Yeah, yeah.
It's becoming an incredibly populous sport.
It is. And I spoke today with Tohonto and West Boston, and both athletic directors have said there's interest in their schools, but like, I said, they asked if we would be the host, but that's for another day.
That's a winter school, right?
I think it's a trend for us to-
That's all, I believe.
To have interest, if there's not enough here, there's likely elsewhere, we can continue to do.
I mean, there was a time when we had more hockey players than the Shoban at one time. And that's coming back, you know, and you're going to see that come back. All right.
Thank you very much, thank you.
I don't know if we want to keep Mr. Gannon up here.
Just keep me here.
If we're going into the chairman's report, we can do that, the gift.
You can just bypass me.
I don't know, I just, I don't want to make the-
I'd call you up, but you're here.
Yeah, Eddie called me.
And there's been a donation.
Yeah, we were fortunate enough to win the, win, but get it donated, a defibrillator, AED defibrillator last Wednesday night out in Worcester. We're the first school in northern Worcester County to get the AED defibrillator donated, and it came at a cost to a family who lost two of their sons. One playing football at Oxford, he was coming across the middle, he caught a pass, got a first down, he got hit, went down. There was an AED, but it was in the snack stand, and by time, and the umpire was a state trooper, and he started performing CPR, and by the time they got the defibrillator there, it was just too late. And their next son, that was, that was Michael, and then Timmy El Cesar was swimming with his other brother two years ago, and they were both, and after, after Michael died, the El Cesar family had their kids checked for abnormalities in their heart, and didn't have any. And Timmy was swimming with his other brother, and he went in, he didn't come up, they went in, got him, and, I mean, there wasn't going to be an AED on a boat, but they tried to perform CPR, and they started this foundation after the first one passed away, and, so we were fortunate enough to get it. And Q, Mr. Hastings and I, when we went for it, we thought, with this being more like a campus, and we do have an AED there, and Anne Marie has them, and we take them out here, and we bring them across the street, this could be like the one to take on field trips, to the class trip. It's in some, what do you call it, gorilla case, that it could be submerged in water, and you can pull it out, and it's still going to work.
That's cool.
So they donated to us with the hope that we never use it, but we do have it. And it can be used, Anne Marie, with you guys on your ticket to Washington with you, or whatever, you know? So this way, if we had a tennis match, and we'd be covered at all fields. Football is always covered, because we always have an EMT, but the other sports aren't. So, you know, you can't have enough of them.
Oh, right, you hope you never need them.
You hope you never need them, but the coaches know where they are. Like, that was at the baseball softball game today.
And they do a lot of initiatives, too. I know they're, they're active in the state legislature to try to get, to try to make more requirements for, like, access to defibrillators and everything. And they, they brought up an initiative that they're trying to start, that I'd be interested in discussing with the school committee over the summer about CPR training, making, making that a requirement for high school graduation, which I think is, I think it's something worth talking about, because-
They have a bill in the House now. But they're also the ones who are pushing to have full-time athletic directors, too, you know, where, you know, you would have your, your football EMT on one sideline and someone on the other sideline, so it's just-
Is that part of the same bill?
I don't know, that I don't know. You know, that was a great win for us, and I hope we never use it.
Tony, how many of these we have, just this one?
No, no, we have one in the, all the time in the snack stand. Now, we have this one, so we have two out, and we have two in, and one upstairs here, and I don't know how many the middle school has. But we have three. We usually take the one out by the, we take the one out by the main office, except when they were having play rehearsal, we would take the other one out. But then we have to put it back at night, because you need it during the school. So they always get back by the beginning of school the next day, but at least now, we have two that we can keep up.
How often do you have to charge these things?
Once a year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. We had ours done, actually, the last school community meeting I was at, it was brought up, and they were discharged that week, because we had used them in elf class, so.
Who charges them, the fire department?
There's a company that will come in and do it, but Q, I don't know who you had come in, right?
Yes, Mr. Mason.
Andy Mason. Handles it.
Well, thank you very much.
Very good.
Did we send a letter of thanks for this? Do we, I think we'll send it again.
We have to do a formal vote, there's that.
That's right, yeah.
Chairman, I move that we accept this generous donation and thank the foundation for helping support our kids in the face of their loss. That's a second call.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Can I, can we add that, do we send a formal thank via letter?
That's part of the motion. Thank you very much.
Can we get the name and address?
Yeah, it's, it's the El Cesar, El Cesar Foundation.
Yeah, 37th Road. I haven't- All right, did you get it from Mary for the letter? Mr. Hastings, you got?
Yeah, I just, I know it's a little bit out of order, and I'm going to stand away from it when I mention this, but just so you know, that on Thursday, this Thursday, Tony's going to be recognized as the MIA High School Basketball, Boy Basketball Coach of the Year.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. For a guy with no jump shot, that's pretty good.
Did I say what you wanted me to say? He would never, he's a humble guy, he would never say that.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
So you get a motion on the floor?
So we had a motion, we didn't really make a formal vote.
Oh, we didn't, okay.
So all those in favor.
Okay.
It's unanimous.
And Mary will get that information from Tony. I think we're already down to, back to you, Mr. Chairman, I believe.